Welcome to the planning board meeting of our -- what about -- good rich. December thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. Assume until the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public hearing and may transmit the meeting through at any meeting. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permitted. This item is for roll call.
Member Calhoun, present.
Member Ryan, present.
Member Barry, present.
Member me, present. Now, we're going to take some things out of order. The first item is for the approval of the minutes of October eighteenth and November eighth. I think the board's had an opportunity to review those minutes. Intervent motion if you can do this. All those in favor? Okay, I'm going to go to the public hearing council order number two oh one seven dash one eight nine, planned unit development districts. Notice hereby given that in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, chapter forty-eight, section five, Quincy Planning Board will hold a public hearing in Winston, December thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, at or at on or about seven P.M. on the first floor of boards and permission from Quincy City Hall, thirteen oh five Hancock Street, Quincy, Mass. The purpose of this hearing is to give interested parties the opportunity to comment on council order two oh one seven dash one eight nine, proposed zoning changes to the city of Quincy zoning ordinance, title seventeen, section eight point four, planned unit development district. The council order proposes to amend the city zoning ordinance in regards to the redevelopment of any existing hospital sites in the city. Mr. Timmons, can you just provide a brief overview? City Solicitor Timmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, good evening. I am here at the request of the Planning Director, Mr. Fatsis, just to give you a brief overview of the intent behind two thousand seventeen one eighty-nine and maybe some specifics about details that might be causing some confusion. As you may be aware, this order was first introduced at the prior council meeting and there was a bit of a discussion about it. Since that time, there has been public input, or more question than input, submitted to the ward council, and that was passed through to me. So I have a bit of an advantage in that regard, that I understand those questions, and I'm happy to answer any questions that members of the board have. Beginning somewhat like in a vein similar to answering the question, what time is it by telling you how a watch is made, I might give you a little bit of an overview here. What this ordinance is about is, in section eight of our zoning ordinance, there are special districts outlined, and one of them is the planned unit development district, which you're all very well familiar with. The planned unit development district in Quincy, the way it operates, the city council is the permit granting authority. Now, during my time as the city solicitor, I've had experience with a number of PUD projects, and without characterizing them as accurately as I might, that would involve salty language not appropriate for a public body, public meeting, they don't tend to work out well. When I was an assistant solicitor under the administration mayor Sheets, we -- I encountered the first PUD project up on Cory Street, High Point, and in the High Point matter, the city council is the permit granting authority, that went on for about four years, there were depositions taken, there were lawsuits, there was all kinds of craziness, and eventually we ended up with a project that you see today, that there's much to criticize about. There were bodies left on the road when all of it was done, several of them were city Fast forward to the current administration, we have had PUD projects, and the most recent one was the SEMI project on Hancock Street in North Quincy, where the city council is the permit granting authority. And again, we found ourselves in a situation where the process did not work very well. The late Brian McNamie, who was the ward counselor in the district primarily affected by the project, sought to act as an advocate while also being on the permit granting authority, and that got him in all sorts of trouble, to the point that during one of the remands from the land court, he was ordered by a land court judge not to participate any further as a member of the permit granting authority. So that one, that most recent experience, really highlights what I was hoping to see addressed here in this ordinance, and that was to eliminate the role of the city councilors as a permit granting authority in projects where we can anticipate trouble. Now, the way this is designed, the current property owner is aware, this is targeting Whitwell Street, because although we tried to write this as objectively and generically as possible, there's only one hospital site in Quincy that we redeveloped. And the point of doing this was, there were several, but one primary point is, we're now taking a site where there are three city councilors who are ward councilors who could be acting as advocates, and because it's a PUD site, they would be acting on a permit granting authority and could not advocate on behalf of the neighbors. So that was one issue. There are others as well, but that was kind of the genesis and the start of the discussion with Kirsten Hughes, the ward counselor sponsoring this. Kirsten and I talked about this, she asked me to draft up the ordinance, I did so, I shared it with the current property owner's attorney, and received input back from them. But I think that two primary things were achieved by this ordinance. Number one, the process by which the redevelopment of the hospital will occur here will involve site plan review, not a special permit review, and I'll go over that in a minute, the significance of that. But number two, what will happen is, and it's regrettable that some of the neighbors, at least I know that the Hospital Hill Neighborhood Association has reached out with questions, and they have a strong concern about how this is going to affect both, I believe it was the level of scrutiny and the manner of scrutiny, or that there'd be lesser public input. But I think as this body knows, when you conduct your reviews of site plans such as this were to pass, you have public hearings, and in this instance, not only would you obtain the input from the Hospital Hill Neighborhood Association, they can act autonomously, neighbors up there can act autonomously, but also the ward councilors. And I think there are primarily three who are affected around the perimeter, and one who's where the site's primarily located. So I think there's going to be additional input here. But also, one of the things we did with this ordinance was we changed the dimensional requirements. The PUD dimensional requirements allow for a FAR, floor area ratio of four point oh. So by way of example, if the site were a hundred thousand square feet, the multiplier of four would be applied, and a developer could develop up to four hundred thousand square feet, as you know. Well, we have reduced the floor area ratio to a maximum of two point five, that's what's in the ordinance. That's somewhat the result of discussion and negotiation, it's also following, you know, an analysis of what's up there now, but it's definitely a reduction. The mayor was very concerned about the density potential of a, the existing PUD four point zero multiplier on floor area ratio. The second thing is the maximum number of stories. We've limited that to six stories. I think that Chairman Mead may recall that during High Point, one of the things the developer tried to prevail upon, and a notion that he sought to pitch, was that he felt that lower buildings, that four-story buildings that wouldn't be seen from all around the city, and perhaps more of them located on the site, might be a more attractive project. While most of you are familiar that Quincy Hospital, the medical center, the existing structures can be seen from a number of places around the city, so there's a height sensitivity there as well. So what this ordinance does is, it addresses those two kind of major, I recall, density issues, the floor area ratio and the height. And then beyond that, we adopted the similar, we used similar parking numbers. So there's not a substantial effect on the density requirements under PUD beyond a lessening, a decrease. So the mayor was happy with that, the developer has accepted that, and so we think that going forward, putting the authority in this board, under the process that it would be a little different from a special perm process, I'll just review that real quickly. As you know, under PUD, a special permit's required, and the standards under a special permit are set out in our ordinance, and they are things like the community needs, traffic and pedestrian flow, neighborhood character and social structures, so a lot of them are very relevant. However, if we go to site plan review, site plan review, my opinion, and I think is perhaps shared by others, first of all, the procedure is far more detailed. As you know, the requirements in the ordinance for plans under site plan review, there are several requirements, I'll just mention a few. Site layout, you have to have all the structures, parking fences, storage, recreational facilities, open space, all laid out in the plans that are then reviewed by you. There has to be a written statement submitted indicating the time during which the project's going to be undertaken, how it's going to be phased and completed, and there are a number of other details that this body would be reviewing. And in order to obtain approval, it's a little different from the PUD special perm process. And it's set out in the ordinance in section nine point five point five, for any folks who wish to review it, but there are eight distinct criteria, as this board's well familiar, and the one that I think's most significant is maximize pedestrian and vehicular safety, both on-site and egressing from it. There's a major concern here, and an appropriate one on the part of the neighbors, because we have the site surrounded by residents A and residents B, but it's all residential. So under this site plan review criteria, you're not only looking at what's going on on-site, but you're also analyzing what goes on egressing from the site. And I know that one of the concerns expressed by the neighbors is whether other entrances and exits at the hospital site might be developed, because there are a couple of spots where if you look at a plan, it's, there's a potential for that type of development, but I think that this board has the ability to control that, with three city councilors as advocates for their, there are various wards, and with the neighbors discussing their concerns, I think there's a strong likelihood we can control things. So that's kind of an overview. I know that you're well experienced with this type of thing, and I was hopeful of explaining, I know that at least one of the Hospital Hill folks is here, I haven't met him, but we've exchanged emails, and I just want to explain for the public to understand that I regarded this, and it's at the initiative of the ward counselor and the mayor, as something that would help us to be, have a little more control over the site. Rather than simply impose it, we got the owner of the site involved at this stage, so that hopefully we can start to work collaboratively. And so the owner's aware of this and understands the nature of it, so we're not looking at any spot zoning appeal or anything like that. So that's what I have, I hope it's been a little bit helpful. Perhaps you're ready to go to sleep now, and others on the agenda are going to suffer.
One question for Solicitor Timmons. I have one question. Thank you for the background, and although what you're proposing is certainly in our bailiwick, it, what you're asking us to do is something that we handle all the time, something that we handle all the time, a question that I have, while you're giving the history of where we're coming from, is what are the arguments for why the city council would ever give an approval authority over PUD projects? Because that's not clear to me. What are the arguments for?
Why they do? It's specifically in the zoning ordinance that they're the permit granting authority.
But, I mean, why is it in the zoning ordinance?
Why is that in the ordinance? I don't really know. It's never, I have not, never understood that, because as I said, every project that I've dealt with, it's been very difficult. I think there's a perception that there's greater control over the project if the councilors who are elected officials, you know, act as a permit granting authority, but I'm not certain. Every experience I've had with it, there've been real difficulties, puts the council in a bad position, and it just becomes problematic. So I don't really know the reason, I'm sorry. I don't know if the chairman does.
I would concur with Solicitor Timmons, since I was around with this graphic back in nineteen fifty-two, and that's for the same reason that the council wanted the control of the PUD when this was put in place.
I would have thought after the High Point permitting process that this would have been changed, but when we went through the rewrite on the zoning ordinance in two thousand eleven, we really looked tired of possibly changing that, and that was not the desire at the time. So we've had a couple of projects since.
Any other questions from board members?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is a public hearing. I would ask anyone that wishes to speak in favor to come up.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
I just want to be, or apologize for being late, just want to be recorded as present.
Rule call.
Member Glenn, present.
Thank you. So anyone wishes to speak, just come up, if you're done by yourself, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Linda Monaco, I live at twenty-one Glendale Road. I'm here tonight representing the Hospital Hill Neighborhoods Association, the HHNA. Our neighborhood association comprises approximately a hundred families in the Hospital Hill area, many of whom are direct owners of the hospital property. Several or many of our members actually are in the audience tonight, want to give a The following statement was approved by the HHNA at our regular meeting held last night, December twelfth, two thousand seventeen, and here's our statement. The HHNA first learned of the generalities of this PUD amendment during a public meeting held by Fox Rock and Council Hughes at Central Middle School on the evening of November twenty-first, two thousand seventeen. The actual PUD amendment document that was forwarded to the ordinance committee was received by HHNA on November twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. We have since reviewed this document, and in an effort to interpret and fully understand the implications of this amendment on our neighborhood, we have raised several questions to Councilor Hughes. As of tonight's meeting, or last night's meeting I should say, several of our questions remain unanswered, and that gives us grave concern. In fact, Councilor Hughes has referred some of our questions to the city solicitor, and those specific questions still have not been answered. As the PUD amendment is currently written, HHNA believes that there are some benefits to our neighborhood, but there are also some potentially negative impacts to our neighborhood. Until our questions are more clearly answered, we do not believe that we have sufficient information to express an informed opinion to this board. While we would welcome the opportunity to work collaboratively with all parties involved with this PUD amendment, at this time, the Hospital Hill Neighborhoods Association strongly and respectfully recommend that no action be taken by this board on the amendment until our questions have been fully answered. Thank you for listening to the concerns of the neighborhood. Now, as a private citizen, I heard Mr. Timmons mention about the part of reasons behind all of this. One of our concerns is that listed, I believe, in the amendment is ten percent of that property would become open space, and when you talk about having more control, one of our greatest issues is Glendale Park, which is adjacent to the neighborhood club. Glendale Park, I believe, comprises about four something acres between the park itself and the slope, which is actually more, I think it's closer to twenty-five percent open space. So that's a huge concern for us as far as this amendment is written. Please take all of this into consideration tonight and postpone this vote, and thank you.
Linda, can I just address that?
Sure.
That's a minimum.
Of the ten percent.
She's got it. How you doing? John O'Neal, sixty-two Grand Wall Road. My problem was with, you know, I actually, this was introduced on the twentieth, and I pinned it out of the trash after the meeting, that was the quickest way to get the document, because this was just announced, it was kind of very sudden. But my thing is this, okay, how many square feet per dwelling unit? There's a couple lines that are missing. How about setbacks? Okay, these are, you know, if we're going to put this into the dimensional zoning chart, they've forgotten a couple things. And then open space, it shouldn't be a percentage, it should be how many square feet per dwelling unit. So let's say at minimum, there should be five hundred square feet per dwelling unit, like the business zone C, and it should be a hundred square feet per dwelling unit. We have to have the numbers all aligned, so the chart makes sense. We can't have another, this to me sounds like it's going to be like another amendment or another letter underneath the chart, so someone's going to have to figure it out. In South Boston today, that development is like six hundred and fifty units, it says it's five acres, but when I did the math, it's like three hundred square feet per dwelling unit. So we need to make sure that if they do build a lot of dwelling units up there, they do use, give us some open space. And then that's a great point about the park. That park, that shouldn't even count, you know, we should really make a deal where, you know, there was an issue before about some park down by Deco, where a park was promised to people, and it wasn't given to them, so this isn't the first time. That park should be given to the people, it should be a separate park, so they, you know, don't sell it off to some other developer later, and they do something else there. So what we really need to do is, you know, make sure that this gets amended properly, you know. So if you were to pass this tonight, could you add things to this right now, or do you not have the power to do that? Could you add my suggestion and say like, you know, it should have a setback according to business zone C? Why not make the minimum, why not make the zoning requirements what the business C, C's only requirements are, which as you all know up on the board, I think, is super dense? So how can they want more than that? We cannot have a more dense area, that would at least protect the people in Quincy to make sure that this project is in some super dense, three hundred square feet, you know, I'm thinking of one fifteen Newport Ave, that's about eighty units on ten thousand square feet, that's the worst project that has ever been approved in the city of Quincy on, you know, square feet per dwelling unit, that's about a hundred and twenty-five square feet per dwelling unit, so we don't want just apartment next to an apartment, next to an apartment with, you know, one apartment window looking inside another apartment window. We need to have something really nice up there, there needs to be a ton of affordable housing up there, and it should actually be a lot of affordable housing for seniors. So I think we have an opportunity right now to have an awesome development on Hospital Hill, and they want to take it out of the control of the city council and not let them have any input. I heard Solicitor Timmons saying, that's right on the border, it's Ian Kane on one side of the street, Kirsten Hughes on the other side. I'm not sure who the third city counselor he was talking about, it's those two people, but I kind of like the idea of having all nine, I would like, you know, Council of the Bone speaking for me, I would like, you know, Dave McCarthy speaking for me, I would like Council Harris speaking for me, I want all nine of them to speak for me, and then we'll come back. Anyway, and you guys will speak for us, so you could send a recommendation to send us back, they can still get great zoning terms like they want, but let's not rush us through, let's do it the right way. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
First, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Ted Morey, one oh one Monroe Road, and I support the HHNA statement that was just read. Speaking as an individual, I'd also like to share with the board the effort that the Neighborhood Association has put into gathering information about this amendment and trying to parse and understand. First off, no one reached out concerning this amendment before it brought before the council. When it was introduced, it was not included in the city council meeting agenda. It was in a meeting with the developer the following day that the amendment was publicized. HHNA received, texted the amendment a week later per our request, and it said that eight questions were forwarded to Council Hughes, and I have copies for the board. Many of these questions were deferred to the city solicitor. Tim, Jim Timmons just responded this afternoon with answers, which we have not had the chance to review or discuss. I think it's fair to say that the Neighborhood Association, intentional or not, was conspicuously left out of the discussion of this amendment today. The future of a fourteen, fifteen acre site right in the middle of a bunch of rez A, rez B properties is arguably the biggest concern of the neighborhood. I understand the planning board has nothing to do with the formulation of this amendment, but I would ask that you assist our neighborhood by affording us the time to discuss it and understand what the individuals have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a few questions.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening. Jocelyn Stedney, I live at eighty-five Monroe Road, and I'm also a member of the Hospital Hill Neighborhood Association, and I, of course, am completely supportive of the statement that was earlier read and the plea to the board and any other governmental entity, the city council, mayor's office, planning department, to sort of put this on hold for just a little bit, so that the citizens that are directly affected can have some input into this amendment. But aside from that, I just want to say that I think that what the association is concerned about is the amendment. We're not talking about the Fox Rock project, and I don't think there's a specific project at hand. I love Fox Rock, actually, as a developer, and I don't say that about developers generally, but they've been fantastic. We've had multiple, multiple meetings with them, they've listened to us, we feel as though they've been responsive, I certainly feel as though they've been responsive to me. So this is not an anti-Fox Rock project position in terms of what I'm saying, and I believe I can say that as far as the association is concerned as well. We're looking at this amendment as an amendment that is seeking to accomplish a specific purpose today, that is to protect that parcel and to take certain actions with respect to that parcel. We don't think that the amendment is clear, the questions, and I don't know if you have the questions that we sent to Kirsten Hughes, but if you don't, we'll send them, we'll forward those to you. We have partial responses from both her and from the city solicitor, not complete, but certainly the responses we've received indicated that there needs to be work on this amendment. So they're looking at a piece of legislation, and we want it to accomplish the purpose, we want it to be clear, easily understood, easily followed, so that later on it's not subject to some kind of dispute, subject to any kind of lawsuit or litigation or whatever. We also want in ordinance that ten years from now is also going to be effective. In other words, if there are minimums or maximums in here, are they going to really accomplish the purpose that we want to accomplish today, and are they going to accomplish those into the future? And our concern, just looking at the amendment itself, is that it needs work, and I'm not so sure that Council Hughes or the city solicitor would disagree with us at this point. We don't see that rushing to judgment right away is a good idea, we're very concerned that both this body and the city council might take some action between now and the eighteenth, but I believe it's on the agenda. And it would be harmful, we believe, to the city, to the, certainly to the residents around that area, to take action. between now and the 18th, but I believe it's on the agenda. And it would be harmful, we believe, to the city, certainly to the residents around that area, to take action now without further discussion and clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? I'd also mention that anyone who doesn't want to speak, but there are sheets on the windowsill over here, if you haven't spoken and wish to be recorded, they're available. On a second time, anyone else wishing to speak? Third and last? Thank you. What's the wishes of the board? Do you want to close the public hearing?
Motion closed.
Okay, we've got a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Director?
If I may ask the city solicitor just to kind of explain what is being asked of the planning department and, excuse me, at the planning board. And I hear a number of concerns from the neighborhood. I know that all those concerns will be part of the due diligence of this planning board in the event that they are in fact given the responsibilities of that charge. Again, we are being asked by the city council to basically accept if they pass this amendment and if they, at their public hearing, see the wisdom of actually having the planning board go forward as the permanent granting authority. So I'd just like a little clarity as to what is actually being asked of the board tonight so that we can be clear on what is actually before you. I recognize that there are many, many issues that a site that large are going to require. There are going to be many meetings, there are going to be many discussions had as to what can and cannot be done on the site, which will be negotiated with the owners, et cetera. But I think it's important to note what we are being charged with and what the communication from the city council to us is asking us to do tonight. If I could, Mr. Timmons?
Also, Mr. Timmons, could you also summarize, if you will, what the board's responsibility is for this zoning change in terms of recommendations?
Well, your role this evening is to provide essentially an advisory vote to the city council that having reviewed this particular amendment to our zoning ordinance, you know, you either recommend it or you don't recommend it as presented. You know, I certainly understand the neighbors have questions, and I think what last speaker, Ms. Sedney, indicated, she's right on point, that these have to be clear and you don't want them to be something that spawns litigation in and of itself. I would respectfully suggest that the lack of clarity is based on just a lack of familiarity with this subject area because we've done really nothing more than taken what's in the PUD provisions. This is the ordinance today, and we've taken the dimensional requirements and reduced the height limitation and the floor area ratio. And as you pointed out, that 10% open space requirement, that's a minimum requirement. The board has discretion to permit a project when it comes in, and again, like Mr. O'Phill when he spoke, he's discussing about buffers and things like that. Those are all critical concerns that under site plan review, that's what comes in. We don't need to specify a 10-foot setback or a 25-foot setback the way you do in a residential, because this is a large, I believe one of the speakers said a 17-acre lot, I'm not sure of the size, but it's enormous. So you're not really going to talk about setbacks when you're talking about an enormous site. I say that respectfully because the concern is very valid. That's kind of baked into the criteria that your experience of working with. So I think all the concerns that were raised are certainly valid ones, but all you are doing is providing an advisory whether this change, which while taking away the permit granting authority right of the city council, that's something they can decide. But the reason for it, and as I explained earlier, it puts the city councillors in a position as advocates, and it puts you in the roles of permit granting authority. And if you think that's agreeable and you think that the change in the dimensional requirements is agreeable, then you can make a recommendation to the council that as drafted, they, you know, you believe they could approve it. It's still up to the council ultimately to make the vote on this. This is merely advisory. It would be the next time around, if this were adopted and a project came in front of you, that you'd have the final say, but we are a long way from there. So one other concern, just to address, is this Glendale situation. We did work with Steward when Steward originally bought the hospital out, the hospital sat out of bankruptcy, and there was a commitment made at that time to convey land to be park space on Glendale Road. Steward did not honor that commitment. They defaulted on that commitment, and when we sought to hold them to it, you know, the wheels started to come off the wagon up there well, well, much earlier than anyone anticipated. So we did not get the park, that's why the space was rezoned as open space. So under zoning, this land down there, now it's zoned open space, it can't be developed. The developer wants to retain all that land as part of its site solely for the floor area ratio requirement. They want to be able to say their lot is a certain size, but that doesn't mean they want to develop the entirety of the lot. And I just suggest that topographically, that I called it the Glendale Forest, it's not really developable. It's also a site that due to the heightened scrutiny and concern of the neighborhood, you have the folks on the Glendale roadside and then the folks on the Colony roadside who don't want to see it developed. It's never been developed. The developer has represented that they're not going to develop it, but they need to leave that in the picture for, in terms of their lot size. So I would suggest, I think what the director's saying is correct, that this is an advisory vote where you're just indicating to the council that you don't see specific reasons not to pass it, and, you know, I would hope that you would see specific reasons to say that we recommend that you go forward with it. But again, it's ultimately up to the council.
Thank you. Two questions? I want to go. I'll make a motion. Okay. To recommend approval to the city council of this amendment. Second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So that recommendation will be forwarded to the city council. So then whenever, are they meeting on the 18th?
Yes.
They'll have the recommendation whenever their next council meeting. Before I switch gears, I just want to make mention of two items. One is the public hearing for 29 to 31 Newcombe Street. You received a letter from the attorney, the project, and they're withdrawing without prejudice. It's a motion to accept the withdrawal. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the other item deals with the appetizing for public hearing for 83 Dietrich Street, which is a board of appeals rehearing. So we will not be able to hear this case tonight, we will take it up at our January meeting.
For the council.
The next item out of order is public hearing, city council order 2016-286 Marijuana Establishments. Notice as I like, given that according to the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, Quincy Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, December 13, 2017, on or above 7:44 PM in the first floor boards and commissions room, Quincy City Hall, 1305 Hancock Street, Quincy, Mass. Purpose of this hearing is to give interested parties the opportunity to comment on city council order 2016-286 proposing changes to the City of Quincy zoning ordinance, Title 17, Section 6, special regulations. The council order proposes to amend the city council, strike that, amend the city zoning ordinance to include the following. Add Section 6.10 Marijuana Establishments and amend Section 10 to include the definition of Marijuana Establishments and other Marijuana Establishment-related terms. Anyone wishing to speak? Speak.
Good evening, Chairman V., members of the board. Stephen Durkin representing the solicitor's office. This is a council order that proposes to amend the zoning ordinance, and the solicitor's office was asked to develop this ordinance in response to the state referendum that was passed in 2016 entitled Regulation of Taxation of Marijuana Act. And so it was the mayor's desire, as well as I think members of the council, wanted to place some restrictions on the establishment of marijuana entities throughout the city. And what you have before you, and I'm assuming you all have this before you, this is council order, what you have represents a good faith effort to place reasonable restrictions as allowed by the law that was passed in 2016. And that law specifically talks about local control and what cities and towns can do and points out that, provides that a city or town may adopt ordinances and bylaws that impose reasonable safeguards on the operation of marijuana establishments, provided they are not unreasonably impracticable and are not in conflict with this chapter. And it allows cities and towns to regulate such establishments in terms of time, place, and manner. And if you go through the ordinance, that's exactly what we tried to do. The ordinance that I developed was modeled after the medical marijuana ordinance that the city has already adopted, I believe back in 2013. And we used a zoning code to place those limitations and to have the city have some control over what is cited in the city of Quincy. And if you look at page two of the proposed ordinance, it talks about performance standards under Section 6.10.5, and it restricts marijuana establishments to nowhere inside of 1,500 feet from a residential district and places other various restrictions involving children or people under the age of 21. And we thought that was important to include in this ordinance. So I offer this via consideration, and, you know, we're looking to have it recorded to the council that there was a public hearing, that I did make a presentation to you on behalf of the mayor and the city solicitor's office, and that we'd asked that the planning board, I believe we're looking for an advisory opinion to be offered to the council. So if you have questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions of Mr. Durkin? Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak, come forward, identify yourself.
Was it the marijuana thing? John O'Phill, 62 Grand Wall Road. This order, do you know when this was introduced? This was introduced in 2016, so a real long time ago. And I have many problems, like is there an actual map, has anyone made of the places that you could possibly open up a place based upon the criteria of this? Has one been drawn? I mean, I would like to see one. I mean, this is one, we just passed one, this should be rewritten, it's the last city council meeting, so they would have to reintroduce this. You'd come back here in a month. I mean, one of the flaws that I have is it references certain laws of the chapters, like if you look at those, I looked up those laws and it represents, I think, wrong chapters and stuff. So I mean, there's actual mistakes, tons of mistakes in the thing. One of the things is what time can a place open up? You know, I think 11:00 AM is one of the things that it says. Okay? Regular stores open up at 8:00 in the morning, 7:00 in the morning. Whatever rules you have for liquor stores should be the same for marijuana stores. One of the things I do recommend, though, is nothing should be open on Sunday. Okay? No one should be, you know, people should go to church on Sunday, that's the one day where no one needs to buy their marijuana. Okay? A lot of the dispensaries right now, they all do business on Sunday except for one that doesn't do business on Sunday, and that one that doesn't do business on Sunday, they're doing quite well. The interesting thing is if you look at the rules, I think that where Airmont is doesn't qualify. I mean, is the golf course considered a park? I know those parks across the street are considered a park. So to me, that's a weird concern because they made something that the current marijuana facility in Quincy doesn't fit inside that box. So I think there's just a ton of flaws in this, and I think Council of Palmucci can write up a much better, you know, marijuana legislation. This is really important. I mean, can I ask this question? Does this mean that a special permit has to be given by the planning board for everybody? I mean, this just becomes a zoning ordinance like in here? This has to be really thought out, really, 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 really good, much, much better than this. So I mean, just make a negative recommendation on this, please. Send it back to Council of Palmucci. That will make him, he will definitely, 100%, within 30 days, send you back a new draft that is much better and will have much, you know, not be open on Sunday. I mean, you know, isn't that a good thing? You know, I mean, I'm actually, to tell you the truth, I don't think this recreational marijuana thing in Quincy is going to work out very well for anybody, you know? So to limit it somewhat is what we're trying to do right now. I mean, closing earlier is more important than opening up late. So I mean, I don't understand that. And my other thing was, there's a thing in there saying it can't be near any public transportation. Well, what about people who need to take public transportation to shop? I mean, that doesn't make any sense. I mean, I actually think someplace right up in Quincy Center or in the North Quincy Development would be a great area for a location, you know? The other thing is the disqualifications. If you're going to run a quarry on somebody, then don't make a couple disqualifications on them. I mean, that whole section should just be totally X-ed out. I mean, you can't say that, you know, we're going to do a background check and then you can't have this, that, or this, or that. So I hate it, okay, in the current form. I don't think it's fair. I think there's lots of things that are illegal, we're going to get litigation, we're going to get people saying that. It's against constitutional rights, we're going to get the ACLU, so it's very bad. So I would say please do a negative recommendation. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I just respond to that briefly, Mr. Chairman. This was, this ordinance was developed, as I said, in response to the referendum that was passed by the board in 2016. Now, that law provoked more questions than it provided answers. And cities and towns were really scratching their heads trying to figure out what do we need to do to come up with some sort of limitations or controls over what happens in our communities? And let's remember, marijuana use, marijuana sale, marijuana... And let's remember, marijuana use, marijuana sale, marijuana distribution still violate federal law. Still a violation of federal law. And one of the things that we wanted to do with this ordinance was to protect people under the age of 21. And that's what this, that's what this is intended to do. It was mentioned that Council Palmucci would take this and make it better. I want to emphasize that Council Palmucci drafted, actually, the medicinal marijuana ordinance that this was modeled after. And so in many respects, this is similar to what he offered the council back in 2013. So I offer it for your consideration. I think it makes a lot of sense, and if any of these provisions are challenged and found to violate the statute, there is a severability clause at the end here, so that if any of the provisions are found to be unlawful in any way, the others would survive and would still be able to keep them in the ordinance.
Thank you. Have a question. Just to help me understand, this ordinance is going to be the one ordinance that addresses the way that a retail shop can carry out their business and how they can look. I see reference to signage that says no misleading, deceptive, or false signs that appeal to minors. Other than that, is that the only restriction on retail establishments, other than location and hours? In other words, a proprietor is able to operate and market and accessorize their stores to their whims, along with the government?
Yeah.
Violate the signage?
Much of this ordinance as drafted mirrors the legislation that was passed that became state law. So much of the wording in here is what's in the state law. And the same would hold true of marijuana establishments for retail. And so, yeah, there are some provisions in here about retail marijuana establishments, but not just that. All sorts of marijuana establishments, cultivators, you know, growers, manufacturers, and all of those provisions that are included in the state law are addressed in this ordinance as well.
Understood. Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Just to point a clarification, just because it's come up twice. This board is acting under the state Massachusetts general law in Chapter 48, which puts with the legislative body the ability to adopt zoning and amend zoning. As part of 48, it requires a planning board of any given municipality to hold a concurrent public hearing and offer a recommendation. The, that's what this board is acting on right now, is under Chapter 48, on both the prior PUD and this one. To the public's comment, in the proposed ordinance, as identified the zoning board of appeal as the special permit granting authority for this proposed judge. Just, you know, there seemed to be a little bit of confusion how this board is acting. Is it acting on the ordinance itself or what? So I just wanted to point that out and clarify that.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Didn't last time anyone wishing to speak? Motion to close the public hearing. Second? Josh, you all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve, recommend positive?
Motion to recommend positive?
Second. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Durkin.
Thank you, Mr. Durkin.
I neglected one other item, and that is, there's a request for a continuance of 235-239 Farrington Street. Please consider the request for a continuance of the hearings. We got an amendment in matter scheduled before the planning board on December 13 to the next available meeting. I have a motion to continue the public hearing for 235-239 Farrington Street. For a second discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Back on the course. The next item is continued public hearing, 479 Washington Street, Lenny Wood Case 2017-10, continued from October 18, 2017. In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, Title 17 of the Quincy municipal code, the Quincy Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday -- strike that. On Wednesday, December 13, on or above 7:59, the first floor boards and commissions room, Quincy City Hall, 1505 Hancock Street, on the application of Washington Street Acquisitions LLC, 27 Elliott Street, Jamaica Plains, Mass. 02130, for a site plan review under Quincy zoning ordinance Title 17, Section 9.5.1, site plan review, and special permit, Sections 5.2.6, loading docks, and 5.1, five, sorry, 5.3.13, signs. The applicant proposes to re-tenant for vacant 479 Washington Street building as a new multi-tenant retail structure with leasing of 4,990 plus and minus square feet portion of the building -- excuse me, to convenient MD. Project will include renovation to improve the aesthetics of the building, facade, and reconfiguration of the site's parking layout to include 60 spaces and the reduction of existing curb cuts. The applicant also proposes landscaping, drainage, and other site modifications. Property contains 45,644 plus or minus square feet of land that's located at 479 Washington Street. Subject property is located within a business B zoning district and is shown on assessors' plan, 2057 Lot 15B.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, my name is Robert Hernandez, and I represent the applicant in this case. Just wanting members who were here before this board, I think, two months ago, who should have made the first presentation. At that time, the board had some questions. Further, we were in the middle of pay review and the submission. Last time we were here, we brought some boards for you to see, and I know there were some concerns with the view you had coming down from the Waymouth area, what you saw on the rear of the building. I know Mr. Barry had some brushy barriers, concerns, along with other concerns. We prepared for you a PowerPoint presentation, and we think that's more visible for you. That's something you can see more clearly. I'm going to introduce Mike Demmencourt right now in that clearing to come in and talk about, to speak about, and bring you through the PowerPoint presentation. I think that speaks volumes worse than me speaking, not that you don't want to hear me speak, but I think that's reasonable.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Cleary, for the record, from FX Harbor Light. It's good to see everybody again. It's been a little while since our last hearing. We were before you two months ago now. In the time before tonight, we have had a very productive two months. The project has now been reviewed in depth by the city's peer review civil consultant, Eels &amp; Thomas, the city's traffic peer reviewer, Ron Mueller &amp; Associates, the city's Department of Public Works, the city's traffic engineer, as well as the city's planning staff. And there's been a number of rounds of back and forth, and I think the comments, questions, and results of our collaboration with those parties has resulted in a very productive time, as well as a lot of improvements to the project. We thought we would come and walk you through those changes. We also know that we had a number of comments and requests that came out of our last appearance before you and our exchange that night, so we've gone and included all of the comments that we got that night in our presentation, and we'll walk you through how those will affect the site plan. With me here tonight to fill in any gaps that might be in my presentation on the more technical side are Jesse Johnson from Bowler Engineering, our civil engineer, Jeff Dirk from Van Essing Associates, our traffic engineer, Kevin Nice, who is our architect from S&amp;M Consulting, as well as my business partner, Mike Demmencourt, from FX Harbor Light. Just to, we thought we would reorient people to the site. And I know we established this last time, but for the benefit of, you know, refamiliarizing everyone in the two months that have gone by, as well as for the benefit of anyone who may not have been attendance at the last hearing, we thought we would very quickly flip through the existing conditions of the site. And if nobody minds me stepping away from the microphone, if that's all right, just to control the PowerPoint. So this aerial shows the existing or the condition of the site when we first were approached to purchase it, and when we first started analyzing what we thought would need to be done to the site to make it a first-class shopping center. The site, as it exists, is just over an acre, 45,644 square feet, with an existing building of 15,088 square feet. We are bounded on all four sides of the property by public roads. On the top side of the screen, we have Southern Artery, which intersects with Washington Street. On the bottom side of the screen, we have Beacon Street, which at this location is two-way directional traffic until it meets up with Bessie Street, at which point it becomes one-way heading towards Southern Artery. There were a number of challenges. Our greatest competition for the site when we were trying to purchase it was from other used car dealerships and auto body shops. And there are a number of challenges that we had to overcome in order to outcompete those other entities and try to reshape the property in a way that would be appropriate for a shopping center that can be multi-tenanted with very high-quality tenants rather than just reusing the existing building and the existing layout of the site, which our competitors were looking to do. There was no form or function to the existing parking layout and no internal circulation, both inside of the site that accounted for any safe circulation within, which also translated to no real safe circulation outside of the site either. This aerial shows 132 parking spaces jammed into the site, which is just, again, over an acre, and there were zero parking setbacks to the property line. We were amazed, after getting into the details of the site, to see that on Southern Artery, there was not only one main curb cut that was being used in this location, which in our opinion was very close to the intersection, but there were in total three open curb cuts to Southern Artery. On Washington Street, there was a full access and exit that was allowing cars to come into all lanes, go in from and out to all lanes of Washington Street. On Bessie Street, there is no curb line along the entire property line of this side of the property, which in effect allows that to serve as one contiguous curb cut. And as you can see, the former use was able to utilize that as three separate curb cuts to the different parking stalls that were laid out. And because this was an extremely active auto body shop, there were two garage bays, actually, that had two curb cuts going in and out onto Beacon Street. So for a property of just over an acre, there were a total of effectively nine curb cuts. We don't think that's appropriate, obviously, for a site at this location for the types of uses that we are looking for. Taking the parking, taking the circulation, taking all of those issues off the page and just looking at the physical site itself, what we were left with, we saw that the lot has 100% impervious coverage, zero setbacks, both front or to the front yard, side yard, rear yard, zero landscaping except for a few weeds that are growing, and a drainage system that was built probably in the 70s or 80s that is obsolete and has not been maintained for decades. So we've tasked our consultants with drastically improving this site. One of the main things that did attract us to this property and to the building itself when we were analyzing what we wanted to do is that the existing building, because of the distinct pattern of bumps, serves as a phenomenal orientation to the intersection when it comes to visibility for tenants, creating three effectively, effectively creating three end cap locations for tenants. And we thought that that would be very attractive in order to attract very high-quality tenants worthy of what we intended to build, which is a first-class shopping center. So I'm going to walk you around. This is a black and white rendering, just because I can show a little bit better some of the thoughts behind our design. We'll get into a landscape color rendering a little bit later, but blowing that up. You can see in this slide that we were able to add that function that was lacking in the parking lot. We took down the 132 spaces that were laid out previously, down to 60 parking spaces, appropriately designed the correct widths, drive aisles, and circulation that allows for the safe operation both inside of the site but also around the site, so that cars can easily get in, get to where they're going, and then safely get out of the site as well. We were able to reduce those nine curb cuts to two full access and egress locations, one on the Southern Artery that was pulled away from the intersection to a very safe distance, as well as on Beacon Street. One thing to point out that we paid close attention to is offsetting this curb cut with this curb cut, so that there is a subtle but distinct traffic movement to force cars to slow down as they come into the site and make that turn, so it's not just a straight shot straight through the site. So it's a safe operation for pedestrians and other cars trying to get around the site. We also adjusted the curb cut on Washington Street. It is no longer a full access in and out. We have reduced it to just an entrance, and because, coming out of the last hearing, and also due to a number of comments that came from the peer reviewer and the town's traffic engineer about people coming up Washington Street and taking a left into the site, cross traffic, we have restricted that movement, and now we are doing strictly a right in at that location. There will be no exits from that location, it will be just a right in. We have the opportunity to add a significant amount of green space and grass in this, in these locations, both along Washington Street and Southern Artery, as well as along Bessie Street, which, again, today, has no curb line, no landscaping. We felt it was important as a buffer to the neighborhood. We will be creating as well a new sidewalk, which will be asphalt and granite curbing along not only Bessie Street, but we will be rebuilding, reconstructing the existing sidewalk along Beacon Street with a granite curb line that also assists for plowing so that it can withstand plows hitting it. We will also be rebuilding the curbs around the Southern Artery side of the property and Washington Street. and Washington Street. That will be with concrete and granite curving as well. We did get a few comments during the peer review and from the departmental review for a request to have two walkways in these locations that are ADA accessible for people coming off of the street to be able to safely get across the parking lot, up ADA-accessible ramps in this location, as well as from the intersection down. We've actually incorporated it into our landscape design, so it's a little meandering, and there's some aesthetic appeal to the walkway. And then we've added a stop bar in this location and a queue line for people coming off of Washington Street, so that there's an acknowledgement that this is a pedestrian walkway, you need to stop and allow for safe passage. This is the revised, revamped, and improved late landscaping plan, and we can walk you through some of the improvements that we've made. It is not very effective to look at this from ten thousand feet, because everything looks very, very small, but not only will we close up on specific areas that we paid attention to, but we'll also see in some of the architectural renderings how it's going to look in, you know, from, from street level. So the first area that we want to pay attention to is the corner of Washington Street in the Southern Artery. Closing up on this location, we've added quite a bit of plantings to the frontage here. This is the pylon, which you'll be able to see in the architectural renderings, has been oriented, so to cut down any visibility issues, so that when you're at the intersection, there's no issue seeing past it. But that is a focus of our landscape design, so that when people come to the intersection, it's a phenomenal presentation from the street. We've also brought the planting down towards the entrance, and as I said before, we've incorporated the walkway into that. Going to the rear of the site, we wanted to pay a lot of attention to beautifying that existing corner of the property, because it does abut the residential neighborhood of both Bessie Street and Beacon Street. Closing up on that, we were asked at the neighborhood meeting to put a tree in this location. We actually had it closer to the property line here. We've pushed it back, so that there are no visibility issues. We would be happy to push it back even more, or address any other concerns that anybody has for the tree that we were asked to put there. If there's a feeling that you'd like us to remove it altogether, we're fine with that as well, but it is something that we're willing to put there. We have dressed up the trash enclosure. It's going to be a wood panel system for the enclosure, and then it's going to be surrounded by quite a bit of mulched planting areas as well. And then as we come up the side of the building, which today is very bleak and very plain on the Bessie Street side, we are not only going to have quite a bit of planting next to the Beacon Street frontage, but that landscaping continues all the way up the side of the building to the front of the building. And then we are also adding decorative concrete papers, so that it really is, from our perspective, kind of a place-making setting, so that we don't have a tenant for this side of the building, but, you know, there's possibly some outdoor space, and it's really a place that is not just the back of the building, but could be something really special. And then at the front of the building, we wanted to do something that is very unique. So focusing on this, this area here is slated for the Communion MD, our anchor tenant. And what we wanted to do, as people approach before they get to the door, is really do an exaggerated landscaping design, not only for the benefit of Communion MD, but as a walkway into what we see as a financial office, a banking office, a loan origination offices, our hope for that space. It's also going to be highly visible from the street. Within our architectural design, our intent has been to have this property serve as really the model for this corridor. We see this as the gateway into Quincy from the south, and also to the south. And we think that this presentation with the improved green space and color that's added, hopefully, will be adopted by properties as, you know, you go towards the South Shore and you go towards the center of Quincy. From an architectural perspective, this is the building in its current shape. As we said, you know, we very much like the bones of the building, but there is quite a bit that needs to be done with the, the actual facade of the building. This is the facade rendering that was presented at the last hearing, and we listened very closely to the comments that we received that night. Couple of things that we walked away from that hearing with very lasting impression of is the landscaping along the front and at the corner needed to be revamped and buffed up. There was a desire to very much tone down the brightness and kind of the shade of the red. That is a part of the Communion MD logo and design, to mute that, make it darker, and not as, as bright. There was a request that we shorten the, or make the awning smaller, which we will accommodate, though keeping it functional, so that the intent behind the awning of people staying dry is still maintained. And this is, and we were asked to actually place the pylon sign in the orientation and in the location that we're actually planning for it in the last one. We thought we wouldn't have it in there, just so it wouldn't block anything, but as you can see here, it doesn't block anything. So, very quickly, we increased the landscaping along the entire frontage of the property, while still maintaining a height that will in no way affect visibility for traffic coming in any directions. We increased the color and the design and the presence of the landscaping around the pylon. We also are increasing, as we talked about just a moment ago, the landscaping in front of the most visible part of both the Communion MD and the Quincy Point Bank, that we are, it's not a real tenant, but that we have basically a placeholder for. There was a request and a question about how it's really going to look in real life. You know, a rendering can often be great, but then you go out after it's planted and built, and it doesn't look anything like the rendering. So this is not exactly what we're planning, but it gives you an idea and an illustration of kind of the inspiration behind it, with how it may appear with the, once the mulch is there and the grass is planted, and it is a lush, you know, presentation that will be maintained. We will have, within our leases, we will have obligations to maintain it, that our tenants are sure hold us to very strictly. And then focusing in on the, on the landscaping in front of the, the front of the site, which we are very excited about, and think it's pretty unique for this opportunity. This is the view from the Bessie side of the property, which we shared with you during the last meeting. Again, some of the comments were, you know, we really ought to do something about the landscaping and the awnings here in terms of the color. And what we sought to do was increase the landscaping and get it towards the frontage. We also included the walkway that is ADA-accessible from that curb, and some increased landscaping along that walkway. What we also did was showed the pylon sign as it will be oriented in the location towards the intersection. We did get feedback from the planning staff that there was a concern that the width of the base of the signage in the pylon may be problematic in terms of visibility. So there was a request to shorten the base, the masonry base, down, which we now have at, I think, three and a half feet, and then a desire to skinny up the support, the pole, so that there's a lot more clear visibility past the sign. And of course, the panels for the sign will be up far beyond any kind of car traffic, so that there will be no issues there. Going towards the side, coming up Washington Street from the base, this is the view that we're looking at that we want to improve. We still want to take advantage of the round aspect of the building and the window lines. And this was the design that we showed at the last hearing. However, we did get comments that this area of the building was awfully bland. Our intent at that time was to make sure that it was understood that this is the back of the building. We didn't want any misunderstandings or confusion, and have people think that it was an entrance to the building. But, we heard you loud and clear, and we agree that there needs to be something, it is a very visible part of the building. So we sought to improve this. And some of the things that we have done, we're going to add a base course of masonry, a gray stonework along the base of the building. And then we're going to darken the pilasters, so that there's much more of a contrast between the pilasters, which go the length of the building. We lengthened up the background of the building itself, just to increase that contrast even more. And this is a view going down the entire building length. Practically speaking, from probably this point on, there's not going to be a whole lot of visibility to the Washington Street side. However, we do realize that there are going to be neighbors and people who are going to be walking this stretch, and we do want it to be an architecturally interesting stretch of building. We are carrying a metal cap on the roof down the entire length of the building, as well as the back. And then we are also putting architectural decorative gooseneck lighting fixtures that will serve not only to add some architectural features, but some safety to any pedestrians who are walking along that stretch. They will not be, you know, lighting the, the sky. It's going to be low-lit, soft lighting, but it will add safety for pedestrians and also employees who will be exiting the, the back. We are putting on more distinct door frames, again, just to enliven the back. And we actually worked pretty closely with Communion MD to affect the internal layout of their space plan. And we put some lunchrooms and some employee break rooms on the back of the building, which had not been there previously, so that we could actually put some real windows back there, and so that they wouldn't be faux windows like some of the retail that you are more used to seeing. So those are really the changes that we made from an architectural perspective. I'm going to invite our civil engineer up to get into some of the technical aspects that, you know, you may want some detail on, you may not want as much detail as he can provide, but just raise your hand and say, okay, we've had enough. And then we can also talk a little bit more detail on traffic, and then we can take any
Jesse Johnson, Bowler Engineering. Hi, I guess Patrick covered the most of it. The biggest thing I guess I would want to add to promote what the applicant was willing to do that was above and beyond. Obviously, we addressed all the peer review comments that came in from all the technical party. One thing we did do that I really do want to highlight is on the drainage front, there really was no existing drainage system in place. Everything really sheeted off the property in different directions and ran onto anybody's streets, into your existing infrastructure. So we looked at that carefully. There was a request to try to take some of the roof runoff, which actually currently comes down downspouts and discharges directly onto sidewalk along Beacon Street, which I'm sure has been a safety hazard at different times of the year. And then you have some other downspouts in front of the, the building that just discharged directly onto the, onto the pavement. We have now routed all that runoff directly inside interior, and then routed it out to an underground, a new underground infiltration system, which will serve to put that clean runoff from the roof back into the ground and recharge it as you would want it to, to the tune of a volume in excess of one inch over the entire roof area, which is above and beyond what you have to do for redevelopments. But we've also taken the rest of the portion of the roof runoff and put it directly into your drainage system to bypass that runoff that's going onto the sidewalk. The other thing we did was we put in deep-sump catch bases, which you get a nice first flush of treatment, and then we're routing that all into a oil-water separator, hydrodynamic separator that size to treat it to above eighty percent total suspended solid removal. That's significant, because that's something that's typically a threshold for new construction, not required for redevelopments. We are doing that for this project, so you're going to get to a level of treatment usually reserved for new projects, and after that, it'll then dump into the city system. So we, we're proud of that, we're able to do that for this site. We're also able to decrease the amount of runoff, not only in rate, but also in volume coming off this site, with all of the green space added, and with some of the efficiencies we get in the, in the infiltration system. Outside of that, I think Patrick covered a lot of the other features that we improved upon, but I can certainly answer any questions you have.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Jeffrey Dirk with Van Essen Associates, we're the traffic engineers on that project. So just to kind of bring you up to speed as to what we've done or accomplished since the last meeting, I think Patrick had gone through a lot of items, so I'm not going to go back into those areas. The most significant change was, is with respect to the Washington Street driveway. As you might recall, there were some comments, both from the public, I think the board had some comments as well, particularly relating to the left turn into that driveway. Your traffic engineer, the city traffic engineer, has some concerns on that as well. So it doesn't show up very strikingly on the plan itself, but we've done some modifications so that driveway to better channelize the right turn movement coming in. And also we created a more, kind of an accentuated curve on the Weymouth side of the driveway, so that we're able to provide signage that basically will say, do not enter, or it's going to be facing traffic that's heading towards downtown. It says, do not enter and no left turn, so it's going to be very apparent, you can't make a left turn there. And again, those accentuations of the corners that we worked with the city traffic engineer on, assist with that as well. So again, that's going to be right turn, enter only at that location. There were a couple of homework items as well that the board and the chairman in particular had asked us to do, and I provided a letter relating to the operations of the traffic signal at Washington and Southern Artery. We've committed to specific improvements at that intersection. They presented initially that there's no changes in levels of service there as a result of the project. However, as you're very aware, there's movements that are operating over their design capacity. We've committed to developing an optimal traffic signal timing and phasing plan at the location. And so what we provided was an analysis to show what the benefits are. So we are able to reduce delays with that plan in place, so that essentially the intersection will operate better with those improvements in the project in place than it does today. We've provided that analysis. Your traffic engineer, peer of the consulted and has reviewed that as well, and has reached that conclusion. There's not a lot of capacity we can take out of this signal, but with some re-timing, we're able to make it operate more efficiently. So you will see a benefit as a result of those changes. The other critical thing is, of course, that's a high-crash intersection. So we've committed to conducting the road safety audit, which is what's required to identify the improvements, and then to fund the implementation of what's termed the short-term low-cost improvements. Those are improvements you can go out there and do immediately and make the intersection operate in a safer fashion as well. So you're basically getting two things there. The road safety audit, that's going to allow us to identify the improvements, and then we're to implement the low-cost, short-term improvements, and redo the timing and phasing at the intersection to make it operate better. So those were kind of the homework items we'd ask to look at. If you have to answer any questions, you have now or later.
My question, we, Patrick mentioned a stop, what's a stop bar?
Just a painted white line, basically, to which you're doing is just... Just a painted white line, basically, to which you're doing is just, what's required is the stop sign, but what happens with the stop line is it just gives you this visual cue as to you should stop there.
What's the levels there is there today?
Today it ranges, it ranges from a D to an E during different time periods, but yes. But you've got specific movements that are failing. And one of the benefits that we have with the re-timing is we can actually get it so that no movement at the intersection is failing. So you've got some that are over capacity, and when we're done with the re-timing, no movement will be over capacity.
There's one aspect of the site that we also wanted to discuss in detail and is very important. It was a topic of conversation not only at our last hearing, but has continued up until today. And that is the size of the signs, the sign package for our anchor tenant, Convenient MD. The package that was submitted is a request for variance for the size of the sign.
Sorry, it's a special permit, I'm sorry, not a variance.
Okay. Thank you. My apologies. The sign as proposed is a hundred and seventy square feet on the front facade and the side facade, and then it's about eighty-five square feet on the rear facade. In back and forth with members of the planning staff, there was a request to get that down significantly, down to a hundred square feet. And in working with the tenant, we've been able to get them to agree to come down to one hundred and forty point five square feet. This is out of our control as the developer, but we, in talking with the tenant, it is our understanding that the nature of their business and the state of their customers when they come to the site, it is, in their minds and from an operational perspective, crucial to have people know, may not drive this area, might be from other neighborhoods around Quincy, may not be familiar with this stretch of roadway, to be very, very clear where they're going. Not only where the business is, how to get in, how to get into a parking space, and then get into the building safely. Very often, some of these folks are sick or hurt, sick children, they're in some mode of distress. And from operating other locations, numerous other locations, they have found that it is crucial to, from a, actually, a public safety perspective, to have signs that are a little bit larger than is the norm for locations like this. So we hope that there might be a recognition of the specialty, special circumstances of the sign. Unfortunately, and we've spoken with the tenant about this numerous times, a lot of it is, I think, is around the fact that it is such a long name, so that for the sign to be legible, because there are so many letters, and it's not just like a CVS that you can do in large, large letters, but for the sign to be legible, it needs to be of a certain size. So we do know, just from our conversations, that this is a sticking point, and trying to get down as far as we possibly can. That's our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions anyway.
Any questions from the board members?
No, I don't have any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. It's clear that you guys took to heart what we talked about last time, and so I thank you for going meticulously through the points and acknowledging that you were reacting to what we said. And let me preface the rest of my comments by saying that I am very much in favor of what's happening on this site. And when Convenient MD came last time, and they gave their, talked to us about the history of the company and how they're going to be a good partner, I'm not only in favor of the use that's proposed, they seem like a great business to have in Quincy. But, what we also talked about last time was how important, and you guys acknowledged in your presentation, this intersection is, and this is a once in a generation chance to get this intersection looking the way that it should, considering that we're talking about a gateway of the city of Quincy. So, thinking from the back to the front, I very much like the features that you've added to the Beacon Street side. What I didn't appreciate was that the cost of making those improvements was another sign? Or am I misremembering that there was no sign previously, and there is now a sign now?
There was a sign previously.
There was a sign?
Correct.
But I do like the improvements that were made. Thank you for correcting my memory. The monument sign, or what, I'm not sure what that's actually called.
The pile?
Yes, the pile. It looked like it was the size of ten men in the little rendering. How high is it exactly? I wasn't able to find it.
It's twenty-five feet high.
Which is the man's. Twenty-five feet high. And then, for the Convenient MD sign itself, so I understand that the proposal is to make it seventeen percent smaller, going from one seventy down to the one forty. Because I'm trying to picture.
Yep.
How much smaller this is actually going to be versus what I think would be reasonable, which is what's required under the ordinance now. And so, you know, it's just my, my personal opinion. I'm, I'm going to have a hard time getting comfortable if, if there's any way to get uncomfortable with a sign bigger than what's allowed under the ordinance. And I hope that the tenant is able to come to that realization.
So what I would say to that is, I would hope that the tenant can be able to come down as well. We've been pushing quite a bit. I would say, however, that it was very clear, it was made very clear to us from the beginning, the outset of our negotiations of the lease, that this is their main, their main sticking point. So, I'm not able to enforce this with the tenant. We do have a lease, maybe sharing too much information, but we do have a lease that is contingent upon them getting a sign package. And if we, you know, there's been movement away from their sign package and a willingness to decrease, but it is unknown at this point whether we will have a deal. If we're not able to, you know, crossing my fingers that we do, but I can't tell you tonight.
Any other questions, board members? Before I ask for Washington Close, the public carry, council, or peer review, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've been sitting there patiently all night, I think we need to experience.
It's all right, I don't want to be my name. The record, my name is Liz Anis from Fields and Thomas. We were hired by the town to conduct a peer review of the project. And we took our review, we looked at their original submission, and issued a letter on November third, which had a couple of twenty engineering and drainage comments. I believe all members of the board have seen this letter?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And the applicant submitted revised drawing and revised drainage recommendations in response to our comments and peer review. And he issued a second letter first week in December. And all of the items that we initially brought up were addressed with the one exception. The proposed planting plan, this is a plant species for the proposed development. The bylaw requires that parking facilities is screened and the planting shall not be less than two and a half feet high. Some of the shrubs proposed appear to be smaller than the ricohier size. A minor issue, but one item that wasn't addressed. We also had our traffic consultant take a look at the plans, and he issued a letter as well. And I believe you have seen his, the traffic consultant's letter. And his outstanding item was regarding the site distances at Washington Street and Southern Artery. He wanted, a traffic consultant desired, were there to be an initial approval that landscaping fences, signs, and other obstructions along the site, site fringes be kept out of the site triangles. Other than that, the applicant addressed all of our items. And I can't answer any questions that you might ask.
Any questions? Thank you. Before I close, the public here, I don't know if the council wants to make any comments?
Can regular people speak? Can the public speak?
Mr. Chairman, I'd love to, this way, I also know there's been some folks that joined us here that live directly in the neighborhood, and your indulgence would be well enough.
All right, from now on, anyone wishing to speak? Chef Fuller identifies it.
Mr. Chairman, board members. Steve P T, P I Z Z I, twenty-nine Beacon Street. I'm a Northway McCoy, and the other side of the bridge. Married a Quincy girl, haven't moved to Quincy, and happy ever since.
With both Quincy and the girl.
Pardon me?
With both Quincy and the girl.
That's what I'm saying. My problem's got, got serious.
You're on the basis.
One, can I just go back to the plan? Real quick, I live on Beacon Street, which is right about there, the house with the red roof. Really pleased that what's going to be going in here is finally happening. I'm glad it's none of the used Carla or brand new Carla. Some of the concerns that I have, lighting. I'd like to see the lighting get toned down after a certain hour, perhaps maybe nine or ten o'clock. I know they can probably just do a setback type of thing with all the new type lighting that they have. I'd also like to see perhaps a fence that goes from here all the way around to the end, because when the east wind blows, there's the seven eleven down the end of the street, you can't believe what Beacon Street turns into. And to prevent trash from blowing down from that neck of the woods and that corner, it would be real helpful as far as preventing that from happening. I like the looks. My question to you people is, once this gets started, will Beacon Street ever revert back to a two-way street? I don't know. And that's our worry on the street right there. It's going to be a lot of traffic entering from Beacon Street to go in. People cheat. They come down that one-way street, they don't care. And I know it's a matter of just, you know, policing it, but I'm hoping that from the corner of Beacon and Bessie, it doesn't revert back to a two-way street at some particular time. I also know that the traffic consideration getting back onto Wat-, uh, the Southern Artery is huge. And, uh, the traffic people must know, but you know, things get kind of tight there at certain amount of hours. You know there's a policeman there every morning, et cetera. Parking, I'm not going to say anything about parking. If parked in front of the building, coming in, they're making that righty and turn, it might be a little on the tight side. I'm just concerned about trash, the lighting, and some of the signage. The signage that's going to go up there right now, is that going to be lit on the backside of the lights, on the backside of the building?
Yes.
Backside, so we'll be able to see it, so it'll be above the main building?
No. No, it's up.
It's up. Thank you. I appreciate that. So landscaping, lighting, it's going to be a hell of a lot less noise, you know, late night tow trucks and whatnot. So as far as I'm concerned, welcome to the neighborhood for these people. I hope it goes forward, I hope they get the tenants that they want in there, and it's a plus for Quincy Point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening. My name's Steve Perdius, I live at eighty-six Ruggles Street. And this is my neighborhood. I live here. I have been walking through this parking lot since I was a teenager several times a week. I walk through this parking lot, through this, this neighborhood, these streets, this property. Well, fence up now, so I technically don't walk through it now, but I walk around it several times a week. I walk here on the Penn Church each week. We run out of milk, this is my path from Ruggles here. So this is a very important parcel to me personally, because this is, this is going to have a real impact on all of the business, please do this right now there. So I agree with the speaker's comments on, there's a lot of good things that are happening here. I thought the presentation was very, very well done. I think that the, I think there's a lot of advantages, a lot of improvements going into this that I'm very, very happy to hear. As a civil engineer, I'm happy to hear about the drainage improvements. I have, you know, all the runoff here goes to the Fall River and Town River, and so any type, anything that can improve the water quality in there is important. Overall, it's a huge improvement not to have a car, another car, getting a car dealership out of there. We're just overwhelmed with car dealerships in this area. Getting this out of there is really great. So I agree that I want to see this move forward, I hope that they're able to pull this off. And I have a couple of concerns that I want to bring up with the caveat that I am in favor of this going forward, but I think there's still some things that can be done to improve this. I know that the report has talked a lot about sightlines here, and it's a really big, maybe I'll use the term sightline a little differently than they're using it, but in the beginning of the presentation, we talked about sightlines from the intersection. It's a huge intersection, and a very critical intersection to the neighborhood. It's a terribly ugly intersection today, and so anything that can be done to improve it would be great. And I'm a really big proponent of trees, and I'd really like to see some street trees along the Southern Artery side. I don't, I don't buy into the concept that if you put street trees in, it's going to damage the development. I don't, I don't accept that as a premise. I believe that if you put some street, street trees on the, and I'm talking street trees, something that's going to grow large and have canopy over the, over the area. I'm not talking about thirty or forty trees along Southern Artery, but you know, three or four nicely placed trees, I believe adds to a development. I don't believe that it takes away from the development, I think it makes it more desirable, a lot less. And, and, and yes, I'm, I, there's thirty thousand cars, literally, there are thirty thousand cars that drive here and there on a daily basis, so we understand that it's important for them to be able to see the property. Nobody's, nobody's not finding the intersection of Washington and Southern Artery, it's just not happening. If somebody says there's a business in the intersection of Washington and Southern Artery, you're going to find it. If it's a tech hi-fi or a big boy or whatever it is, you're going to find it, you know? You're going to get it. So a couple of trees here and there on the Southern Artery side isn't going to be, in my opinion, detrimental to this development at all. So that, that was my, my big concern on the property is, is some, some trees on, I'm also concerned with the, I guess, the I'm also concerned with the, I guess the two items, some trees and then the signage. So the size of the signage on the front of the building, maybe a trade-off would be a few trees for the neighborhood to kind of mute the impact of the neighborhood, a trade-off with the size of the sign. The pylon sign seems crazy big to me. You know, I think about the, just on the other side of the intersection, where the old bank used to be, where Quincy Savings Bank used to be, they have a sign there. And I believe it's probably, you know, 12 or 15 feet tall. 25 seems crazy big to me. And each rendering, you see it kind of showing it, you know, as you're looking on, you're not really seeing it if you're just walking down the street on Southern Autory, which I do two or three times a week with myself, my wife, my kids, family, neighbors. So that's a, that's a real issue for me. So those two things, I guess I'd like to ask the committee to try to address and the board to address and encourage the developer to add that to the development. And then I guess I'd like to talk then more off the site, just a couple of things. On the, on the topic of it being an ugly intersection, we've got, we've got the Christopher Park on the corner over there, and there's not a tree on the site. There's some bushes setback, but you know, there needs to be some shade, you know. Can we ask the, you know, through the board here and ask for some amenities to the neighborhood? I know there's been talk about tidying at the intersection and some traffic issues, but some trees at that park setback a little bit, that it's going to add some shade to the area would be fantastic. Every day I take the bus at the intersection of Wash, I'm sorry, is Washington Street and River? And so I'm looking to my left as I'm standing there, staring at this intersection, watching the cars come bombing at the intersection. And there's a, there's literally a fight every day. There's jockeying for position every day. As they come out of that intersection, it goes from two lanes down to one lane. And the pavement striping, there's none on that side. There's none really here other than the double yellow line in the middle. Until you get much further down the street, you get a line on one side for where sort of street parking is. But this really needs it. The people are jockeying and fighting for position. I've seen a car accident once. It's in, you know, a high actual impact area, but it's a point of tension every single day with drivers that are racing through that intersection and who's going to get into the, into the lane first at rush hour. And so some pavement striping, yeah, pavement striping is so cheap, you know, it's like a dollar a foot or something. It's really cheap money to net the lane down from two to one and put in a lane for some parking space delineation on the right-hand side handing down on both sides. Once you get, I'm thinking the, I'm thinking the Washington side opposite this intersection, away from the bridge. That's that area there. A bike lane through, from here down to Elm Street would be fantastic from here in Washington Street. So I think there's a lot of different amenities that could be added to this. If you look at the attractiveness of the Southern Autory section, from Southern Autory to the Walgreens, it's just, it's a beautiful stretch. Once this ugliness goes away, it's really a nice, it's really a nice boulevard. One lane on each side. You've got some nice trees on both sides, big sidewalks. It's really, really nice. So if this could be improved on the sort of duplicator in the Washington Street side, that would be fantastic. So I'd like to see some more amenities provided by this development into the neighborhood around it and some issues resolved in the signage and some trees. I think those, oh, and the timing of the intersection itself, there's something like 22 seconds to get across this intersection. And it's just not enough. And you know, with young kids, I did it with a baby carriage, and you're running. You've got to run across this intersection if you want to get across, or you got to, or you got to wait twice. So really, it's a matter of like three or four additional seconds is all that's really needed. And you're going to make it a lot easier for neighborhood kids getting across the street. So I'd ask that they consider increasing the timing, the push button for pedestrians to cross the street. I think it's at 22 now. I think if it went to 28, I think it'd resolve the problem. So I'd ask to put that in the mix as well. Thanks for the time. Pardon for the long-windedness, and I appreciate all your work on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perdius. Anyone else who wants to speak?
Very quickly, John Waterfield, 6 Stu Graham Mall Road. Just back to the chart, I'm glad that you did listen and you did make some changes before, but when you take that left in there, if you drive by there, it's almost like it goes right into the building. That needs to be eliminated. That is definitely a hazard, a safety hazard. To say that someone, you know, don't take a lefty and turn, when you come down Cottington and says you're not supposed to take a left, but every once in a while, someone tries to take a left because they can. That needs to be eliminated. Other than that, you know, I'm for the project. I'm not for allowing them to have billboards like that. That's kind of what you are going to improve. And that is part of the thing. They can come back here in a year or two years and say, hey, we want this big super sign, you know, or we want this other sign. And right now, they're asking for a change of use from one business to multi-businesses. So the business right next door, you have to go in on the sides. You know, you go into that little peach, you can't get out on Washington Street. I think the church across the street, you can't get out on Washington Street. So I mean, why would you allow them to go out on Washington Street? I mean, I could argue here that, you know, you shouldn't even allow them to have multiple businesses there because it's a high traffic. They even said themselves that. There's lots of accidents there. Let's prevent any accident from ever happening. Because I can guarantee you right now, there will be an accident of someone crashing when they come out that Washington Street exit. When you come going towards the bridge, there's two lanes that go around. So let's say if someone's coming around and they want to take that right, they have to almost make like a U-turn to get in there, which means they might go into that left lane. That's a safety issue. Good planning would be to say, okay, we'll approve everything except please get rid of that Washington Street exit. I mean, I am against a project if you allow to have that Washington Street exit. Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to speak? God's love.
Mr. Chairman, member of the board, Merry Christmas, right, season. I guess first and foremost, you know, thank you for your engagement throughout this process. I think I reiterated that last time. My own opinion, I think that the conversation has been quite substantial. I also want, you know, kudos to the applicant. Because it's not every day that, you know, we have these conversations and folks take action. So, you know, greatly appreciate, you know, you folks listening, you know, to the neighbors, to the board, working with me, et cetera. I mean, it's huge. And I do think, I don't think I believe semantics, that this is a huge step forward for Quincy Point on so many different levels, right? From the tax base down to what I believe will be a lower impact environment to offering service, particularly with the anchor tenant, which I believe is needed in the, in the area, you know, of the point. Couple things, you know, I like the idea that they're going to contribute to, you know, improving traffic through mitigation pain. I just kind of want to be clear because I know in the beginning stages, excuse me, I was outside speaking with someone. We had come to talk and, you know, the applicant suggested partnering in the community, et cetera, and actually helping to advance what's going on down the fourth block. So there is, right, still that part of the deal, I guess, aren't us?
Yes.
Right? So that's, that's all important stuff too, because, right, we're trying to recreate an environment, not just a parcel. So those are real positive things. The only thing, and again, I think it's tremendous improvement from public safety to aesthetics to, to everything, quite honestly. The only sticking point for me, and I've heard it alluded here this evening, is the size of the sign issue, right? It's not every day, and I'm just speaking for myself, that, you know, we, or I have entertained, call it four signs for one tenant on a single property. But I also understand in order to attract the right business, which I believe Convenient MD is, you know, you need to, you need to work with folks. I understand the need to want to clarify to your customer where you are, and I support that. You know, my friend Steve had already mentioned, but this is a 30,000, 30,000, it's probably lean these days, but a 30,000 trip travel down Washington Street on a daily basis. So when you think about, you get four illuminated signs. And the ones that are kind of jumping up to me are the ones, you know, right as you enter the actual facility. I think as proposed, this is Steven's chat about a little bit. I think the reality is they're like six foot by 24 foot as proposed now. Six foot by 24 feet. And six two with heels on, so above. It's about my height, right? That's a pretty big sign, if you really think about it. I know that the business model currently is more in kind of rural areas. And I think New Hampshire is a huge, a huge location for these folks. 30,000 trip travels a day. I'm very confident with illuminated siding and the siding in the exterior of the building, the pylon, which I understand serves as a directory, and two smaller signs in the front. I'm very confident that folks will, you know, figure out where the site is. And I say it's not to be hurt, but it's like, if you can't, if you can't internalize that or figure that out, I mean, it's probably more of a visual and optometry issue versus locating the urgent care facility. So love the project, love the progress, love the improvement. And I think it is like heading in the right direction. But the sticking point for me of the, you know, six foot by 24 foot signs illuminating the entry. But other than that, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a huge step forward. I do. Pretty confident that the board does as well. So appreciate the opportunity to engage in dialogue and look forward to hearing your deliberations.
Thank you, Count Tann. Two items before I ask the board to motion to close the public hearing. First, if anybody who has not spoken wishes to be recorded, there's sheets on the windowsill. Second. Do you want to speak, sir?
No. Can I ask one question?
Sure, again.
We have the height of the side of the panel, the sign.
What are the dimensions of it?
The side? Yeah, we have the height, but the, but the. The, the actual sign panels are only seven and a half feet by ten. Oh, okay, that's 70 square feet, so that's. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And the second item was asked, Mr. Tann, as we should have wanted concluding remarks.
Ah, right, when I've spoken to the applicant, he, they understand the board's concern. They have a tenant they have to deal with. I would ask the board, if possible, not to close the public hearing, not to take a vote tonight. Let them go deal, yeah, to deal with the tenant. That is their main content. And the concern is if, if the vote is taken at the level of what we're speaking about, what the ordinance requires, that in essence will, at the least, they have, most least for the tenants. They've asked for the ask, if you not close the public hearing, let them try and work something out with the tenant and then come back. My, my feeling, their feeling is that if you vote on that as described tonight, it may actually end the lease for the tenants. They are the anchor tenant. They are the purpose of the road, and they're coming here. And we don't want to let that go south right now. They'd like an opportunity to go back with the tenant who is presently here and have discussions and see what can be done. That's their request.
We can do one above the other, right? We can close the public hearing without taking a vote. You need the public hearing?
That, that's, I don't know.
Different point, I would prefer, if there's going to be some additional information that will be composed, I would prefer to have the hearing still open so that if the public wants to comment on that one, supported that opportunity without closing.
If it's helpful, I, like Cole, don't remember a sign being on the rear, but I'm probably wrong. But now that there is a sign on the rear, I'm concerned about it being illuminated. And as the neighbors pointed out, maybe we could work with the tenant on maybe not having that illuminated and, you know, and consider some other things with regard to signage. I just think that that sort of low, you know, rear sign being illuminated is, might be a little too much.
Yep.
Just to, to go off of that, and we're talking about going back to the tenant, how big is that sign on the rear?
On the rear, I believe it's, it's eight five square feet. Eight five square feet. It's below the, no, I'm sorry, it's still above.
Personally, I'd like to see it either gone or much smaller. Because it seems to me that when you're coming down Washington Street, you can see the main sign pretty clearly from the street. So this just seems overkill. And so, again, I'm speaking just for myself. I'm going to have a hard time with so much signage.
And I understand, and I think they've heard the board clearly, I also know they've heard the planning clearly. This is not the applicant saying, this is what we want, this is a requirement. So they'd like an opportunity to speak to the tenant and see what can happen to give them, we can work something out there.
Let's take a motion to continue the public hearing. Second, discussion, all votes in favor?
Aye.
Vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next, the next, the next item on the ten, uh, public hearing, 33 Overland Road. Planning Board Case 2017-11, in accordance with the provisions of National Law Chapter 48, Section 11, and Title 17 of the Quincy Municipal Code, the Planning Board. Although the public hearing on Wednesday, on Wednesday, December 13th, honorable 9:10 PM, in the first place, the first. Letting correct. The applicant proposes, I lost my place, I'm sorry. The applicant proposes the construction of four, a new four-unit, three-story residential townhouse development with two garage, car garages for a total of eight parking spaces. The applicant proposes the landscaping, drainage, and other site modifications. The property contains 8,400 plus or minus square feet of land is located at 33 Oval Road. Subject property is located within a residency zoning district, as shown on the census plan, 501, 508-1, Lot 1. Mr. Harrington.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. For the record, I'm Christopher Harrington. I represent Robert Maddy, who's the applicant in this case. And our office is located at 21 McGrath Highway in the city of Quincy. This is a project that is before you. It's a relatively simple and straightforward project. The Oval Road neighborhood is off of Hancock Street and the Ebony Stadium, near the new central middle school. And the zoning over there is residence C, which allows multifamily development with 2,000 square feet of land per unit required by zoning requirements in residence C. This particular house was built in 1926. It's a very old, single-family home. It's in very poor condition. And it would require essentially a tear-down or a complete rebuild to make this structure comply with current building and energy efficiency codes. My client's proposal is to tear down the existing house and build four new residential townhouses. As stated, the project has eight parking spaces. It's a three-story townhouse. The design of this building is very similar to other townhouses that have been permitted in the city. Two car garage on the first floor, living space on the second and third floor. The townhouses have three bedrooms, one and a half baths. And the gross area of the building is 6,216 square feet of living space for each unit. That's approximately 1,500 square feet per unit. These are nice sized units that will sell for a good sale price and be good for the tax base of the city of Quincy. tax base of the city of Quincy. Again, the project is located on Oval Road in Wallaston, not far from, uh, the stadium. So there's a bus service available on Hancock Street. Uh, it is within walking distance of the walls. The train station, although it's quite, it's a long walk, but you could walk to the walls of the train station, uh, or pick up a bus on Hancock Street. Our civil engineer is Jim Burke, and, uh, he's like, like to talk to you about the, uh, stormwater management system of the site and the work that he's done for this project. Thank you.
Good evening, Jim Burke with the Silberk and Associates. Uh, we have a small lot, residential lot, we're going to just, uh, put four units on it. It is covered by a, a sewer easement on the west side of the lot that, uh, flows from north to south. And, uh, we are tied into that. As far as the stormwater goes... We'll be running parallel right to it. We get, uh, ten cul-de-sac chambers that, uh, capture basically the entire infirmious area. Uh, we got a single catch basin right in the middle of those two bloom squares represent the cul-de-sacs, and, uh, with a water quality tank behind it that flows into, uh, either side of that, uh, cul-de-sac strip. Roof runoff, uh, flows, uh, to the ends on opposite sides of where the catch basin is, so we have an opportunity to capture it all. It's a fairly flat lot, so we kind of just bowl out the, the driveway so everything kind of flows right to the middle of those catch basins. So it's a small enough lot for one catch basin. The soil's out there, we haven't done any soil testing yet, but I have done some work in the area and, uh, we've got some good sandy, sandy soils there. So, have any questions? I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions, Mr. Burke? Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, this project requires all, obviously, your approval, uh, site plan review. It also requires zoning board approval, which has been granted. This project went before the zoning board of appeal, and, uh, the required variances for block size, lot width, and building setbacks were all, all granted by the board of appeal. We also requested a parking variance, and I want to explain what that parking variance is so that people understand the... The parking requirement in Resident C is one point seven five spaces per unit. Uh, these are townhouses, each townhouse has two spaces in, in the garage on the first floor. So the project has more space than what is required by the zoning. However, our zoning also says that, uh, in residency districts, you have to add a quarter space per unit for guest parking. So in our case, each unit has that extra quarter space in its own garage, which is useless to put an extra car in, uh, because obviously you keep a quarter of a car in someone's, in someone's garage. So we received a variance from the board of appeal for that provision of the, uh, of the zoning code about having that quarter space designated for guest parking. And what we did to try to address that is, uh, the driveway on, uh, the driveway on this side of the house is, uh, this side of the building, is, uh, is wider than it needs to be. We made this side as wide as possible so that a person, a guest, could pull up and could park their car in front of the garage doors of the person who they're visiting without blocking the driveway, and the other units, people will be able to get in and out. So we tried to do, although we can't, we can't say that that's a parking space because it doesn't comply with zoning, what we, what we've tried to do is essentially give one guest parking space for each unit in front of their own garage doors without blocking the neighbors being able to get in and out of their units. So we did that just by making this extra wide. So this is the, um, this is the building that we're proposing. This obviously is the site, uh, facing the driveway where the garage doors are. Uh, we got a neighborhood meeting, which was attended by the city councilor, as well as about, uh, eight to ten neighbors, mostly directed butters. Uh, that meeting went, went very well. Uh, the neighbors were, uh, were not opposed to it, questions about what's it going to look like, how tall it would be, uh, normal types of questions. So what we've done is, um, this, the neighbor who lives on this side of the building, um, was concerned about, obviously, about privacy of her property and how, how much activity there will be on this side of the building. The original set of plans for the project, uh, these, these are the kitchens here, right here where the drawers are. The original plan had a sliding glass door into the kitchen, into each one of the four kitchens, with, uh, with a small deck off the back and a set of stairs down to the ground. Um, we eliminated the sliding glass doors and the decks because, uh, the building is about ten feet from the property line. The fence is six feet tall. The decks would have been nine feet above the ground. So the person who lives here would have had people on their decks three, higher than the fence, you know, staring down into their backyard, which really doesn't, kind of defeats the purpose of putting the fence up for privacy. So, um, Mr. Matty agreed immediately to, um, to change this door and to eliminate those decks, so that, that issue's not there. So, right now, this back door is just a, it's just a second means of ingress for the unit. So you come out onto a small landing and then down a flight of stairs to the ground. And the units are, are laid out like what many of the units that you've seen, combined living, dining on the, on the first floor, kitchen, half-bath, bedrooms on the second floor with full bath. It's not attic in these buildings, and then each unit has the, uh, the two-car garage on the first floor. So the, uh, the variances that we needed, uh, have been approved by the board of appeal. Some of the dimensional requirements that we did not have to ask for variances for, uh, Resident C requires two thousand square feet of land per unit. Uh, we've got eighty-four hundred square feet of land, and we're only asking for four units, so we're not asking for more units than what's allowed. Uh, Res C allows six stories, we're doing three. And, uh, and residency allows a maximum floor area ratio of one point oh. Our project is point seven four, so we're a good distance, less than the maximum size of the building that could be built. And lastly, uh, residency requires four hundred square feet of green space per unit, and we have seven hundred and thirty square feet of green space per unit. So we tried to, um, we tried to design and propose a project that was an appropriate size and scale for the size of piece of property that we had. And that's our presentation. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Tannen?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I used to drop my kids off at the St. Anne's, um, Central St. Anne's, so familiar with that road. Is that still the main access point to drop kids off at Central?
Kids? Uh, well, it's a very interesting question. At, um, at the end of Oval Road, it's a dead end at the red line. And there is an apartment building at the end of the road, it's, it's right next to us. People come down Oval Road, they drive through the apartment on the apartment building...
Is that what I was doing on the...
It's not, that's not a street.
Okay.
So everybody, everybody who does that is trespassing on the, on the apartment building's land.
Okay.
It's, it's actually not a street, but everyone kind of cuts through the apartment.
Got it.
So when they, the official redesign for Central, all the traffic is, is supposed to come from the opposite direction up there, you know, coffee break, yeah?
Okay.
It's all supposed to come from that direction and then down that street and then turn up St. Anne's Road to, back to Hancock. So that's, I know that a lot of people do that, but it's not officially a road.
Got it.
Any other questions, the board? Right now. Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come up and sit by your side.
Quickly, John Waterfield, Sixty-two Grand Mall Road. I was at the public meeting. This is a good project, they're knocking down an old house building for new units. We're going to get new growth. It looks like one house when you look at the sideways, so I'm looking for this project exactly as it is presented. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to be recorded or was not spoken? Those sheets are on the side. Motion to close the public hearing?
So, aye.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, the department has a recommendation. Are we going to do this?
Yes, I am. All right. Based on the city of Quincy, each department mental review, the department recommends that the board approve the site plan review and special permit under Quincy Zoning Lawrence Title Seventeen, under Sections Nine Point Five One, Site Plan Review, and Special Permit, Section Five Point One Point Seventeen, subject to the following conditions. And, uh, at the request of the board, we went ahead and created a section for general conditions.
Thank you.
And then, so I'll skip over those and go down to the special conditions. So first, uh, the applicant shall conduct a pre-demolition hazardous material survey, i.e. asbestos-containing materials, fluorescent lights, TCD-containing materials, including phallus, mercury-containing thermostats, and switches, et cetera. And provide a copy of the survey to the Quincy Health Department. If the hazardous materials are found in the building, then the applicant or ex-placent abatement contractor shall consult with the Quincy Health Department regarding abatement measures and monitoring of abatement work. Special condition two, as the project site is located in a residential neighborhood, the applicant shall consult with the Quincy Health Department on noise mitigation measures or project-related noise generating activities in order to comply with local and state regulations. Special permit, or special condition number three, the applicant shall address to the DPW satisfaction concerns regarding setback requirements and other concerns regarding infiltration system prior to the issuance of a building permit. Special condition number four, the applicant shall perform a pre- and post-construction inspection of the sewers and manholes in the project vicinity from St. Anne's Road to Oval Road as per DPW specifications and submit the inspection report to the DPW prior to the issuance of a building permit and before any connection to the city's system. Special condition number five, the applicant shall install a new sewer manhole for connection to the city sewer system if required by the Department of Public Works. Presenting these to Attorney Harrington, related to one meeting and, um, with their retake of special conditions.
Okay. And then state a motion for approval based on the department's recommendation. So a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, two business items, one business item.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The acceptance of the schedule for next year's meetings, power break. So, I think everybody had a problem. What's the next meeting?
January tenth, twenty eighteen.
All right, we'll probably have to think for some alterations during the year. Is that amenable to everybody?
The meeting schedule?
Yeah.
Did everyone get a coffee? Did you all get a coffee?
Yes.
But I didn't fix any, could we, could we delay? I need to check my, um, travel schedule and then if we can talk about it next meeting.
Sure.
And our next meeting is the tenth of January, two thousand eighteen.
Which one's last?
And the other, the last item is, is the endorsement of the plan, but I think some, I know more reading...
More.
It's in the back room. Okay. Hearing, no motion, hearing motion to adjourn. Thank you all.
And, uh, signatures on the vote?
Uh?
Signatures on the vote?
Yeah, they're circled.
Okay.
Thanks, gang.
Thank you.